I am informed that we have a quorum. I call the meeting to order. Welcome you back to this second session of Hingham Annual Town Meeting 2013. I would like to make some initial comments before we proceed to Article 22. I remind you again, please, to turn off all cell phones and pagers, to please refrain from using your telephones and texting in the course of the business we will undertake this evening, absent an emergency or another compelling reason. I remind you again that the details of the upcoming town and state election are set forth in your warrant booklets. The election will take place Tuesday, April 30th, and all of the details are included in the booklet, including the opportunity for voters to vote at the town hall during resident regular business hours at the town clerk's office, up to and including Monday, the 29th until noon time. So, last chance to vote at town hall will end Monday, the 29th at noon. I call to your attention again the Talent Bank application form, which is set out in the booklet at page 75. As your presence here tonight indicates, this town works with volunteers and committed citizens. The selectmen and I invite anyone who is interested to find an opportunity, a voluntary opportunity, to serve the town by looking at the Talent Bank form, completing it, and also looking through the annual report, which sets out the reports of the various subcommittees and boards, and you'll get a good sense of what those committees do. They also set out their minutes on the town's website, which is well done, and you can get quite a good sense of what your skills would allow you to do. We typically meet a couple of times in the month of May, the selectmen and the moderator, to interview folks and give them an opportunity to speak to us about their desired service and to match people with appropriate voluntary opportunities. As I did last night, I'd just like to introduce people. To my far right is Susan Murphy, Special Counsel to the Town, focusing on real estate matters. To Susan's left is John Coughlin, our Town Counsel. Up here, Irma Lottner from the Board of Selectmen, Bruce Rabuffo, Board of Selectmen. To my immediate right, Eileen McCracken, our Town Clerk. To my left, Betty Foley, the Assistant Town Moderator. To Betty's left, Laura Burns, Board of Selectmen, and Ted Alexiadis, our Town Administrator. At the table over there are the 15 members of the Advisory Committee who worked tirelessly throughout the year to prepare for this evening. We give them our thanks. I call your attention again to the moderator's message at pages three and four of the warrant book. There you will find summarized important sections of the town's bylaws and the procedures that we follow at the Hingham Town Meeting. I will again, as I did last night, take a moment to review the procedures that we use for voting. All votes are taken in the first instance by voice vote. If I am in doubt as to the result, or if seven voters should rise and express doubt as to the result declared by the moderator, then a standing vote is taken, except that a ballot vote will be taken in lieu of a standing vote if either the Advisory Committee or 50 voters promptly call for a ballot vote. As a ballot vote takes considerable time, our practice has been not to request a ballot vote unless there is a compelling reason to do so. I remind you again that we have time limits on speaking. You get six minutes the first time you speak on a matter, three minutes the second time, and a voter will not be allowed to speak to an issue more than two times if there are others who wish to speak and have not had an opportunity to do so. I will tell you when you have one minute remaining and ask you to conclude your remarks promptly when I tell you that your time has expired, that your speaking time has expired.[294.33][294.33](Laughter). When you wish to speak, if you wish to speak, please make that known. I will recognize you, and I would ask you to come expeditiously to the microphone that is closest to you, and to realize that these microphones, as sensitive as they are, are kind of engineered to pick up a voice that is right up against the mic. Explain to somebody, it's kind of like an ice cream cone. You want to get it right up, right up close to your mouth so that you can be heard. Tonight, we also would like to take a moment to recognize Laura Burns. Laura Burns is finishing six years as a member of the Board of Selectmen and is currently the Board Chair. Laura has served on the Advisory Committee prior to her service as a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I think everyone who has had an opportunity to work with Laura knows that she is an unusually gifted public servant. She is thoughtful, she is extremely bright, she gives of herself in ways that are absolutely extraordinary, she benefits us in ways that, of which we are aware, and of ways in which we are not fully aware. Laura and her colleagues on the board obviously have focused diligently over the past several years on ways to reduce the property tax burden, to share the good fortune that we have with citizens who are less fortunate. And as she finishes her tenure, I would like just to have the record reflect the enduring gratitude of the Town of Hingham for the service to our community of Laura Burns.[411.03][411.03](Applause). I mentioned last evening that the various town committee reports were available, most of which were incorporated into the booklet. There was also available, and remains available, the report of the Water Committee, Water Study Acquisition Group. That is not before the meeting this year, the potential acquisition of the water company. We also received today a notice from the Long Range Waste Disposal and Recycling Committee of the opportunity to dispose of waste safely, as is the pattern. The program will take place at the Plymouth River School. It will happen on May 18th. It will start at nine in the morning and run till one in the afternoon, and there is a one-page notice available in the hall tonight explaining how that opportunity may be taken advantage of to dispose of household waste in a safe and environmentally appropriate We ended last night, having finished the first 21 articles of the warrant, which takes us to Article 22. Article 22 is set out at page 39 of your warrant booklets. Article 22 asks whether the town will authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen to acquire four parcels of land together containing approximately 18.6 acres, more or less, off Recreation Park Drive. It asks further for a vote to appropriate $3,750,000 to pay costs of purchasing the property, including incidental costs and other costs related thereto. It requires for its adoption a two-thirds vote, as it involves borrowing. Mr. Rabuffo for the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bruce Rabuffo, One Duwiggins Path, speaking on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. This article is simply about commercial economic development. Let me say that again. Commercial economic development. The supplement reported of the Advisory Committee describes the history of this proposed article as a means to help Hingham encourage the commercial development of South Hingham. Its passage by this body would yield significant economic benefits to those current businesses in that area and may allow for additional benefits to other businesses seeking to locate in Hingham. In response to a request from the Board of Selectmen, the South Shore Chamber of Commerce undertook a study that told us that Hingham is a desirable business location. Our boards, a number of our boards, have concurred with that statement, and they've identified this particular location that it may be ideal for that development. Last fall, I called the Chairman of Avalon to see if, together, we could find a way for Hingham to attain this economic goal by using the land on Recreation Park Drive. We met a number of times, began the dialogue. It took time, a few months, for the town and Avalon to work out the details that result in the article that appears before you this evening. I thank Avalon publicly for working with us so that we can give you the opportunity to vote on this acquisition. An affirmative vote may permit the town to locate a wastewater treatment facility there. But that is only one step. We have another step, but that is already in motion. We need more water in that area. As you may know, I also represent the Selectmen on the Water Study Companies Study Acquisition Committee, and as you may have read in the interim report that the moderator just referenced, and that was mentioned in Article III's discussion last night, I have had an ongoing dialogue with Aquarian's president. Today, we have in our hands a plan for the town and Aquarian to bring additional water to this commercial area. We need both activities to occur for economic growth to happen. In addition, the town has reviewed the land to see if it is suitable environmentally for its intended uses. We have relied on the Avalon Company reports and supplemented it with our own town engineer, Roger Fernandez's assessment. We also had an environmental attorney review these preliminary conclusions. Yes, of course, we have more work to do and more studies to complete, but we believe this land purchase will help with that goal of economic development. The town's operating budget plans to pay for this acquisition, as we said about a number of items yesterday. The Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee, both voted unanimously in favor of this article. I urge you to vote yes on Article 37.
Mr. Innis for the Advisory Committee.
Richard Innis, 29 Lincoln Street, for the Advisory Committee. I brought some water because I have a sore throat tonight, and if I have a Marco Rubio moment, I hope it's not on YouTube.[860.00][860.00](Laughter). Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not going to stand here and repeat what Selectman Rabuffo has said on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, and I'm going to assume that by now, everyone has had a chance to read the Advisory Committee's comment in the supplemental report on Article 22. But I would like to make just a few points. Unlike some of the previous articles that we've heard in this meeting, this particular article earned the unanimous support of the Advisory Committee and the unanimous support of the Board of Selectmen. Our reasons are simple. For at least the past four years, and maybe longer, we have realized and discussed among ourselves the need to promote economic development in the industrial areas of South Hingham. Only by doing so can we realistically expect to expand the town's commercial tax base in any meaningful way, that is, to provide tax relief to Hingham's homeowners. I don't know if everybody is aware, but residential property owners in Hingham bear 85% of the tax burden, while commercial taxpayers account for the remaining 15%. But this area of Hingham needs a water supply and wastewater treatment to attract commercial developers and businesses, and this land acquisition addresses the latter need. To be sure, it's not the whole solution, but it is an important piece of a larger puzzle. It would more than double the wastewater capacity of the property that the town acquired by vote of town meeting in 2011. It's actually adjoining property across Route 3. To those who might say the price is too high for 18.6 acres of land, I would remind you it's the same price that was negotiated by the three property owners and Avalon Bay, plus Avalon's development costs and an allowance for up to $50,000 in potential closing costs. That's how it comes to $3.75 million. How can it be said that a price negotiated by willing sellers and a willing buyer, none of whom are acting out of any compulsion to sell or to buy, is not fair market value? And as described in the Advisory Committee's supplemental report, the cost of financing this acquisition these days, given the very low interest rates prevailing, is quite low, $10,000 perhaps, $15,000 in each of the first two years. Going back to the purchase price, it would pale in comparison to the costs of not making this purchase. If we make some reasonable assumptions about the various burdens on town services, including the police and fire departments, and the schools, not to mention traffic considerations, that 177-unit residential apartment complex on this site would impose on the town's budget, I think we can all do the math, in three years or so, those additional costs will likely exceed the cost of this acquisition. Now, cost avoidance is not the reason for this unique property acquisition, but it does put the purchase price in perspective. So, if we are truly serious about attracting commercial development in the industrial park area of South Hingham, we should authorize the Board of Selectmen to step into the shoes of Avalon Bay and acquire this land for the town's wastewater treatment purposes.
You have one minute.
If we don't approve this article, this one-time window of opportunity will close tonight.
Thank you. Is there further debate? Mr. Patch.
Tom Patch, Ship Street. Good evening. I rise to speak to make two points for the record, if only because we will be able to refer back to the transcript of this proceeding should any issues arise in the future. First, I believe it is imperative that the people most directly affected by the intended use of this parcel as a sewer treatment plant be provided a meaningful advisory voice in managing the impacts of the plant. According to the 1995 publication entitled "Odor Control in Wastewater Treatment Plants" by the Water Environment Federation and American Society of Engineers, sewer treatment plants do have emissions. They have odors in particular, and they do try to do a good job at maintaining the spread of these odors, but the reality is it's not 100% effective. And while I understand that there are those who are of the view, not yet another committee, please. Given the significant potential impacts of the proposed treatment plant, I ask the Selectmen to consider creating a standing committee comprised of neighbors as well as sewer customers in that area to provide a mechanism for providing a direct advisory voice in the operation of the treatment plant, similar to how the MWRA has an advisory board made up of representatives of member communities appointed by the mayors and selectmen of those member communities. I believe the whole town must show the utmost respect and regard for those most directly impacted by a proposed town-sponsored sewer project. This in turn requires the town to meaningfully analyze and mitigate the impacts of the project to the maximum extent feasible, including providing a meaningful voice in that process to those to be specially impacted. This is even more so warranted, given a primary public policy justification for the plant is generation of real estate tax revenue that will net benefit the whole town. My second point is this. As I have stated in different forms, we must be ever cautious that by creation of this plant and the additional sewage flow capacity arising out of this land acquisition, we do not inadvertently create the opportunity for the development of one of the impacts this acquisition effectively eliminates: the creation of a significant housing development pursuant to Chapter 40B, with all the resulting impacts on municipal services, traffic, and taxpayers. Even though this treatment plant is intended to serve a district zone for industrial office use, Chapter 40B allows local zoning to be overridden. I cannot overstress the importance that we must undertake an informed, intelligent analysis of this issue. Otherwise, we could face a similar circumstance faced by the town of Lunenburg, where the Housing Appeals Committee made certain determinations as to access to sewer on appeal of a 40B project. I note the following excerpts from a January 2013 Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court decision entitled "Zoning Board of Appeals of Lunenburg versus the Housing Appeals Committee." Although the Housing Appeals Committee found the 40B project site was not within the geographical boundaries of the original sewer district, the town must have contemplated the expansion would increase the number of residents with legal access to sewer, because the town had already modified the sewer plan by expanding sewer access through a spur. The town must have contemplated that expansion would increase the number of residents with legal access to sewer and had allowed market-rate homes to connect to the sewer spur. It also found that the town must have anticipated that the project's parcel would have access to sewer service because it installed a sewer connection directly in front of the parcel. And last, the town does not claim that the project would stress the capacity of its wastewater treatment facilities. The Supreme Judicial Court upheld these findings of the Housing Appeals Committee. I believe few among us would take issue with the truth of the statement that as a town we have substantial direct experience with the vagaries and vicissitudes of Chapter 40B. Let us be proactive on this issue. Thank you for your consideration of these matters.[1440.01][1440.01](Applause).
I recognize the voter at the microphone.
Judy Kelly, 19 Harvest Lane. If Article B is not passed tonight, Avalon Bay will proceed with their plans to build a 177 rental units on Recreation Park Drive, resulting in a significant negative impact to our community. If this complex is developed, then it is estimated that these apartments could increase our school system by 100 or more students. Using the current average yearly cost of more than 11,000 per student, this many students would increase the school budget by more than 1 million on a yearly basis. Students requiring special services would be an added cost. Increased responsibility and cost will be incurred by our police, fire, and ambulance departments. It has been estimated that the Avalon shipyard requires the attention of these departments on an average of five times per week. This proposed development will require similar attention, leaving the police less time to patrol our neighborhoods. Each time our fire truck leaves the firehouse, it costs you, the taxpayer, approximately $872 per trip. This would result in additional yearly expense of over $2 million to you, the taxpayer, for the fire department alone. Currently, the Derby Street corridor has an F rating by the state. The Avalon Bay apartments would add an estimated 1,200 additional vehicles per day on this already congested road. Additional traffic results in additional accidents, which require additional services by our police, fire, and ambulance, and ultimately additional cost to you, the taxpayer. I just want to divert from my talk to mention what Tom Patch had to say. We are going to get a wastewater treatment plant on that property, because Avalon Bay will need one for their 177-unit apartment complex. I would prefer, as a neighbor to this property, to work with our town as opposed to working with Avalon. Our town officials have plans for this parcel of land that would increase businesses in the South Shore Industrial Park. The revenue derived from these businesses will help to manage our tax costs. We need to use this land for a purpose that will not overcrowd our schools or be a financial drain on our taxes. Our small community is already supporting one Avalon development. Do the math and see what it will cost our town year after year, forever, if we don't vote yes on Article 22. Please, vote yes on Article 22.[1670.01][1670.01](Applause).
Is there further debate? If none, we come to vote on Article 22. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set out in your booklets. This vote requires for its adoption a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it, more than two-thirds have voted in favor of Article 22. The article is adopted. Article 23. Article 23 would direct the Board of Selectmen to petition the state legislature for legislation that would change the position of treasurer-collector from an elected position to an appointed Is there debate? Mr. Edmondson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Phil Edmondson, 55 Cottage Street, for the Government Study Committee. The Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Board, and the Government Study Committee, with the encouragement and support of our sitting and very able town treasurer-collector, ask you to vote favorably on Article 23. I'll try to answer three questions for you. Why do this? How does an appointed treasurer-collector compare to other positions in town government? And why make this change using a different process than last year? Why do this? We favor this article because it will increase the pool of qualified applicants for future openings of the position. Currently, we're limited to town residents who are willing to put up with the campaign fundraising, occasional personal attack, and possible humiliation of defeat that goes along with an election process. along with an election process. That scares off a good many candidates. We also want to have the ability to promote from within. For example, our number two in the department now is not a town resident. Further, an election doesn't guarantee the most qualified of candidates will win. We all know that personal popularity can play a role in elections, and while that may be fine for some jobs, it's not the way any of us would consider hiring a treasurer for our own business. In fact, speaking as a business owner, I'm sure I don't want my treasurer to be the most popular member of my management team. Lastly, making sure that our town finance activities are coordinated through a common portal of the selectmen's office will make it more likely that rating agencies view us in a favorable light, thereby reducing the cost of town borrowings. How does an appointed treasurer-collector compare to other positions in town government? First, over 80% of our peer towns have appointed treasurer-collectors. Six comparable towns have converted in the past 18 months. Hingham does not elect all important town positions. We don't elect our fire or police chief; we don't elect our town administrator or accountant, nor our school superintendent. We elect people to jobs where policy judgment rules the day, more so than the efficient administration of town, state, and federal laws and regulations. In Hingham, the treasurer-collector seldom is in a position to make decisions about town policy, and if she did, it would run the risk of being counter to those economic guidelines set by the selectmen and the rest of the finance team in a fashion that could hurt our bond rating. Our discernment between elected and appointed runs along a time-tested pattern. Elected offices are ones that make policy. Appointed offices are administrative and implement policy rather than make policy. Third, why make the change with a different process than last year? We who make this recommendation to you take very seriously the question of how best to make this decision. We know that we expose ourselves to charges that we're trying to circumvent the public will by using town meeting exclusively this year rather than using the town ballot box, which last year overrode town meetings near unanimous support for this change by just 18 votes. In this past legislative cycle, we've become aware that the state legislature has changed its process and now allows us to seek approval solely at a vote of only our legislative body, us, town meeting. Had this process been available to us last year, we would undoubtedly have suggested a town-meeting-only vote. That's because we're unable to print detailed discussions of the matter on a ballot. This more nuanced discussion of the issue that can take place at town meeting will undoubtedly produce a superior outcome for Hingham. Second, it's worth noting that at this meeting, many hundreds of years ago, we first decided to institute the office of treasurer, and at a later meeting, the office of collector. We took no ballot vote. At a later town meeting, we combined the two offices, and we took no ballot vote. In 1991, we changed the position to appointed, and later in 1991, we turned it back to being elected, but we took no ballot votes in either case. It'd be a bit flipped to say something like, "What's made at town meeting can only be changed at town meeting," but you have to admit that the consistency of making these decisions at town meeting has a certain attraction in our history. None of us who favor this change take lightly the charge that critics may make that we are somehow circumventing the citizenry by using a town-meeting vote rather than a ballot vote. I assure you that we hold no less dear the value of democracy than any of you. But most of us on these committees who made these affirmative votes, I think, recognize that representative democracy is sometimes more appropriate than ballot democracy. We use both; we decide when to use each type. Representative democracy, I think, is the best way to make this decision. In closing, I hope that, as you can see, the history for this has gone in many ways, but the tide is frankly irreversible in Massachusetts. I hope that you agree it's time to have an appointed treasurer and collector in order to have the best treasurer-collectors we can get for Hingham's future. Please vote yes on Article 23. Thanks.
We have Mr. McCune first from the advisory committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bill Wise. I am going to express the minority view on this issue. And I thought best to do it with a story. Everyone likes stories. A mother and father call their three children into the kitchen, and they say, "Children, we have a surprise for you. We're going to do X and Y this year." And the oldest, I'll give him a name, Jack, I like Jack, strong, oldest boy, says, "Well, wait a minute, Dad. We talked about this last year. We had this very discussion about X and Y last year. And you asked us for our opinion, and we gave it to you. And now you're going to do this now? You didn't even ask us about it, did you? You're just telling us now." And then the youngest, we'll call her Lucy, because I like that name, Lucy, Lucy says, "You know, Dad, Mom, I was with you on this last year. I was with you all the way, and I'd probably be with you now. But, Don, you should have told us about this and asked us." Now, the middle child, how many of you have middle children? You're going to know what I'm going to talk about now. And especially, you happen to be a middle child, you're going to know what I'm talking about now. The middle child is Lioness. Lioness says, "Well, you know, I went with Jack last year, because I respect my older brother, and I went along with that vote, and I thought that was pretty good. And I could change my opinion, but frankly, Dad, middle child, I'm a little ticked at you, because you, you're not showing us any respect. You asked us, we gave you our opinion, you seemed to agree with it, and now you're telling us we're going to do something different? Geez, Dad, that's just not fair." Now, this isn't the parable or the prodigal son. I don't have the qualities to give that type of parable to you. But the children, of course, represent the nearly 3,000 voters last year who came to the polls on this question and overrode this town meeting. 3,000, and quite a few more could also vote on this issue. So here's the issue for me, as a minority member on this advisory committee. We are going to abolish a franchise office in this town. It should be done at the ballot. I'm asking you to vote this down and give Jack, Lucy, and Lioness a chance to go back to the polls, go back to the ballots, and make the decision as a democracy. And, if I may end with this, I found a saying by Aristotle. It's old enough, and it's 2,700 years old, but I think it might apply tonight. He says, "If liberty and equality, as thought by some, are chiefly to be found in a democracy, they will be attained when all persons alike share in the government to the utmost." And I think you should leave this as a ballot question. Thank you.
Mr. McCune from the advisory committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Greg McCune, 20 Stagecoach Road, speaking on behalf of the majority of the advisory committee, who voted by a margin of 2 to 1 in favor of Article 23. Mr. Edmondson eloquently put forth the basic arguments that the advisory committee considered. I think Mr. Wise put forth a reasonable concern, but I think if you've read the comment, and I know you all have, that we addressed that as part of our deliberations. But I think it's important to remember that the vast majority of policy decisions that we decide as a town are not subject to an election vote. Most of them are decided here at town meeting, including zoning and bylaw changes, most recently, a land acquisition, and tax relief that we voted on yesterday. In fact, yesterday, we voted by a unanimous voice vote to spend $90 million to run the town next year, which brings me to the larger point. The town is a $90 million enterprise. We need to have competent, professional, financial leadership. We're very fortunate that with Ms. Montgomery, we have that now, but we believe that the best way to ensure that we have it in the future is to switch to an appointed treasurer-collector position. So I ask you and urge you to join me, the majority of the advisory committee, all of the Board of Selectmen, and the majority of the Government Study Committee in voting in favor of Article 23. Thank you.
Is there further debate? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion of the advisory committee under Article 23. It is set forth at page 41 of your booklet. It essentially will transform this position from an elected position to an appointed position, and it would direct the Board of Selectmen to petition the great and general court, our state legislature, for passage of a special act relative to the position of treasurer-collector. All this is more particularly set forth in the recommended motion of the advisory committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All opposed, no.
No!
The ayes have it, it requires a majority vote. The motion is adopted. We now come to Article 24. Article 24 has been inserted at the request of the Government Study Committee, and it would authorize the moderator to appoint a committee of seven citizens of the town to investigate the feasibility and cost of utilizing electronic voting at both regular and special town meetings. It continues at page 43 in numbered paragraphs, including one that does need to be amended at the very end. It says, "And that the sum of $5,000 be appropriated." I would request that you insert at the end of that sentence, "for the expenses of such So just add right at the end of the recommended motion that the sum of $5,000 be appropriated "for the expenses of such committee." Is there discussion on Article 24? Article 24 requires for its adoption a majority vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All opposed, no.
No!
The ayes have it. The vote is adopted. Article 26. Article 26 is an article that requires for its adoption a two-thirds majority because it involves a proposed transfer of real estate. The recommendation of the advisory committee is set forth...
(inaudible).
Article 25. Article 25 would modify the quorum requirements for our meeting. It requires for its adoption a majority vote. The recommended motion of the advisory committee is set forth at page 43 and 44. Is there discussion?
Lynda Port, 18 Marion Street, speaking on behalf of the Government Study Committee. Last year, if you were here, the Government Study Committee had proposed reducing the quorum from 300 to 200, so that even to start town meeting, you'd need 200. That went down by two votes. The Government Study Committee thought it was very important to try to deal with two problems. One is, and I think it's the bigger problem, is that when we start the second night of town meeting, we did pretty well tonight. Thank you all for coming. We were only 15 minutes delayed. It's very often over an hour. The second problem is that as the town meeting progresses, as you get late in the evening, people leave, and we don't fortunately often get a quorum call, but if someone did call for quorum, we're very often below the 300 level and can have to end town meeting and restart it up. The goal here is just to make town meeting more efficient and ultimately to save town meeting, because what happens, at least I have found, is you know town meeting's going to be late the second night, you know it's going to be even later the third night, so you don't run to town meeting because you think, "It's not going to start anyway. I'll just wait." And it's a self-fulfilling process, you know, it's a bad cycle downward, where people come late because they know it's going to be late, and ultimately, it gets late enough, you say, "I was going to go, but I think I'll stay home and watch TV." Let me just say that the Government Study Committee does not want to reduce the number of people at town meeting. We want to do everything we can to get people to town meeting. The electronic voting is one approach that we're talking about, and trying to make it as efficient as we can is the other. And we really think that this proposal will make town meeting more efficient by getting people started, getting it started, I actually think will increase attendance, because people will know we'll be more efficient, we're going to start on time, and move things along. I would very much ask you to approve this. I would say that all the selectmen are in favor of it, and a large majority of the advisory committee was in favor of it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ennis from the advisory committee.
Richard Ennis, 29 Lincoln Street, for the advisory committee. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Government Study Committee has devoted countless hours of research, discussion, and deliberation to the matter of town meeting quorum. I know because I attended many of their meetings. Last year, it proposed an article that would have reduced the quorum from 300 to 200 for each night of town meeting, and that article, as Lynda said, was defeated by the narrowest of margins. So the Government Study Committee went back to the drawing board over the past year and is now recommending that we retain the quorum of 300 to open the first night of town meeting, but once it is convened, reduce it to 200 and continue it at 200 for each remaining session of town meeting. This is a less dramatic change than was proposed last year, and it's one that the advisory committee and Board of Selectmen support. Why? Because experience tells us, as Lynda reminded us, that after the first night, attendance tends to drop off, as it did this year. And sometimes, it's necessary to wait much too long to call our friends and family to try to make quorum. If we were to change this by, say, a floor amendment here tonight, to continue at 300 for each night of town meeting, or to open each session of town meeting, we would not be addressing the problem that the Government Study Committee is trying to correct, namely, waning attendance as town meeting moves from night one to night two and possibly night three. The Government Study Committee's done a lot of research on this, and it has shown that many Massachusetts cities and towns, I should say towns, have reduced or even eliminated quorum requirements in the interest of expediting the conduct of their business. No delays, no interruptions. This article directly addresses the real problem of diminishing attendance on subsequent nights of town meeting while maintaining the quorum at 300 voters to convene the first session. Significantly, I think, most significantly to me, anyway, the gentleman who successfully moderated our town meetings for over 40 years has recommended favorable action on this article to the advisory committee. Because the proposed change would expedite the conduct of town meetings that extend beyond one night, the advisory committee heartily endorses Article 25. Thank you.
Is there further debate on Article 25, the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm that person that might propose an amendment this evening. Dennis Friedman, 445 Christian Street. Thank you, Nelson. On April 9, 1821, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts passed legislation allowing, for the first time, a form of government other than open town meeting. At that time, 1821, the town of Boston had 43,000... At that time, 1821, the town of Boston had 43,000 citizens. Yes, open town meeting is a venerable institution that has served the Commonwealth and the town of Hingham quite well for the past several centuries. I agree that change is required for this 17th century institution to continue to function effectively in the 21st century. I just don't agree that reducing the quorum to 200 to commence subsequent nights of town meeting is a step in the right direction. I don't believe it addresses the real issue, which is to increase attendance, not to accept dwindling attendance. Thus, the change offered by my amendment maintains 300 as the quorum requirement to begin each session while leaving intact 200 as the number required to maintain a quorum for each session. Rather than lowering the quorum, we should be trying new ways to make town meeting important enough for 300 people to show up on time for subsequent nights. I welcome the consideration of electronic voting as a way to shorten town meeting without compromising its integrity. I applaud everyone for being here tonight reasonably promptly so we could get started by 7:15. But in the internet age, shouldn't we be televising or webcasting town meeting and allowing people to vote from home using a password-protected, secured site? How about providing babysitting for young parents? Or allowing people to vote by proxy? Perhaps we ought to start subsequent nights of town meeting at 7:30 PM so Boston commuters have a chance to eat dinner before attending? Or maybe we should offer a free spaghetti dinner at the high school cafeteria for anyone who signs in by 7 o'clock? These aren't all the creative solutions that I'm sure a creative town like Hingham could come up with, but I think there are many that we have not explored before we give up on asking 300 people, less than 2% of our voting population, to start each night of town meeting. I'm not sure we can ever make town meeting a convenient way to conduct the business of the town, but we can make it more approachable and accessible. Let's not take the easy way out. Anybody who comes to town meeting knows that's not the way we do things in Hingham. We try to take the right way. We want to challenge ourselves to pave the way for another few centuries of workable, effective, open-town-meeting form of government, and I ask for your support for this amendment. Thanks for listening.[759.88][759.88](APPLAUSE).
Let me explain to you what Mr. Friedman's amendment would do and remind you that we will first vote on the proposed amendment. The motion of the advisory committee, of course, is the main motion. Mr. Friedman is proposing an amendment to that motion, so we will first come to vote on Mr. Friedman's amendment. Is there a second on that amendment? Mr. Friedman would have Section 9 read as follows. "The number of voters constituting a quorum in order to convene the first or any subsequent session of a regular or special town meeting shall be 300." He would then strike the second sentence of the proposed motion, the recommended motion, and it would continue under Mr. Friedman's proposed amendment. "Once convened, the quorum to transact business at any regular or special town meeting shall be 200, provided, however, that a number of less than 200 may, from time to time, adjourn the same." So essentially, he would strike that second sentence so that the, each session would require 300 to convene the session. So if you want to vote in favor of Mr. Friedman's amendment, I'd ask you to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
The noes have it. The proposed amendment is lost. We now come to vote on the main motion of the advisory committee. All in favor of adoption of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it, and the motion is adopted. We come now again to Article 26. The recommended motion of the advisory committee is at page 45 of your booklet. This requires for its adoption a two-thirds vote as it involves the proposed transfer of real property. The recommended motion is that the town of Hingham vote pursuant to the appropriate provisions of the law to transfer care, custody, management, and control of a portion of a parcel of land, along with buildings and any improvements thereon, currently held by the town for general corporate purposes, to the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant Board of Commissioners for municipal lighting plant purposes. Said parcel of land situated within the boundaries of land owned by the town of Hingham. All this is more particularly set forth in the recommended motion. We have Mr. Wise from the advisory committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Wise, 10 Pope's Lane. This is pretty much a, uh, an easy, uh, an easy project to promote and support. If you had to use this at all during the last year in the dock, you didn't use it for long because we had a fantastic facility in our town, our own municipal lighting plant, working hard all year round to keep us pow, give us power and put the lights back on.[966.12][966.12](APPLAUSE). You know, that's a great way to say thank you. It's a great way to say thank you. There's an opportunity now with the approval of this article to build a new facility over by the Bearcove area adjacent to the Public Works. It will allow the Hingham Municipal Light Plant to combine various divisions now under one roof. The Cushing Street facility is too small and is overcrowded. We're paying sizable rents over on Lincoln Street that will cease when we all move onto one roof. It's a state-of-the-art facility. It will allow trucks to move in and out and load and unload outside of the elements. It's centrally located so we can get to the areas of the town quicker and restore power to where it has to be restored. The Hingham Municipal Light Plant will build this without an increase in rates. They have the money put aside to do it. They will perform a Chapter 21E environmental, uh, program, environmental, uh, investigation to make sure that there are no contaminants there, and if there are, will be appropriately addressed and mitigated. It's a good thing for the town. It's not in the residential area, and the Cushing Street property, once they move into the new facility, will be returned to the co, the town for appropriate use as the selectmen deem appropriate. The selectmen approve this. The advisory committee approves this, and we ask for your vote, two-thirds vote here tonight, to permit the Hingham Municipal Light Plant to build a new facility over in the adjacent Bearcove area. Thank you.[1077.01][1077.01](APPLAUSE).
Is there further discussion? Mr. Foskett? If not, we come to vote. As I said, this requires for its adoption a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the recommended motion of the advisory committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. The motion is adopted. We now come to Article 27. Article 27 asks whether the town will authorize the Conservation Commission with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to grant conservation restrictions over certain parcels acquired for conservation purposes in previous years. I have been furnished with an amendment to the motion that is set forth in your booklets, and I will read it to you. This relates to the, um, property that we approved last night, the so-called Noonan property, and it would add the following, uh, text, and it, it's so lengthy that I think you will not want to write it down, but simply to understand that the purpose of this amendment is to authorize the imposition of a conservation restriction on the Noonan property. So you will recall that at last night's meeting, the conservation, I strike that, the Community Preservation Commission authorized the purchase of various parcels for conservation purposes. The law that relates to the Community Preservation Act requires the imposition on purchased parcels of permanent conservation restrictions and the holding of those restrictions by third party.
We would recommend that you...
Why don't you come to the microphone and identify yourself, if you would?
Susan Murphy, Real Estate Counsel. I would just recommend that for a complete record, that if the entire amendment, starting with "to delete the words," could be read into the record of the meeting.
Yes, I will read it into the record. I was simply saying that people will not necessarily want to transcribe it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So the proposed amendment will read as follows. It will delete the words or act on anything related thereto, which is at the end of the recommended motion, and it will insert in the place of that now deleted phrase, "and to further authorize, but not require, the Conservation Commission with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to grant a conservation restriction that meets the requirements of Section 12 of the Community Preservation Act, par. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44B, par. over the property known as Parcel A, to be acquired by the town as authorized by Article 11, Subsection 5 of the 2013 Annual Town Meeting, and being more particularly shown on a plan entitled Plan of Land, Rockland Street, Hingham, Massachusetts, dated March 29, 2012, prepared by Cavanaro Consulting and recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 57, page 268." That motion has been offered by Mr. Coughlin on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of the amendment that I have just read that has been duly made and seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the amendment is adopted. We now come to vote on the recommended motion of the advisory committee as it has just been amended. This requires for its adoption a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. That is a unanimous vote. The motion is adopted. We now come to Article 28. Article 28 requires for its adoption a majority vote. This relates to a conforming change to the town bylaw as it pertains to the Community Preservation Act. The recommended motion of the advisory committee is set forth at page 46 of your booklet. The recommended motion would have the town vote to strike the existing Sections 2 and 3 of Article 38 of the town bylaw and renumber the existing Sections 4, 5, and 6 as Sections 2, 3, and 4. That is on account of a change in state law which obviates the need for the further amendments of the town bylaw. This requires for its adoption a majority vote. Is there discussion? Seeing none, we come to vote. All in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That, too, is a unanimous vote, and the motion is adopted. We now come to Article 29. Article 29 would amend the general bylaws of the town in Article 38 by substituting the paragraph set forth for Paragraph 6 in Section 1 and would give essentially a permanent seat, or a dedicated seat on the Community Preservation Committee to a single, one member of the Recreation Commission as designated by that commission for a three-year term. Is there discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Richard Ennis, 29 Lincoln Street for the advisory committee, for the last time. The proponent of this article is the Recreation Commission. I'll call it the REC. The, it's an elected board of five commissioners whose purpose it is to provide us with safe, accessible fields, recreational facilities, quality recreational programs throughout the town on a year-round basis. The various programs are financed by the revenues raised by those programs as opposed to our tax dollars. Most of us, especially parents and grandparents, are happy to have such an abundance of recreational programs available here in Hingham. The reason for submitting this article is simple. The REC is requesting a permanent seat on the nine-member Community Preservation Committee, the CPC, in light of last year's amendment of the Community Preservation Act, which I'll call the CPA. That amendment allowed CPA funds to be used for certain recreational purposes, and naturally, the Recreation Commission expects that the CPC will receive requests for funding of recreational projects and programs, and I think the CPC anticipates that as well. The REC believes that the accumulated knowledge and experience of a Recreation Commissioner designated by the REC would benefit the CPC in its consideration of such requests for funding, and therefore the town. Now, under the statute, the CPA statute, a town CPC shall include but not be limited to one member of the Conservation Commission, one member of the Historical Commission, one member of the Planning Board, one member of the Housing Authority, and one member of the so-called Board of Park Commissioners. So the law requires a minimum of five permanent seats, each of which is filled by a member designated by that commission or board on which he or she sits. But here's the rub in Hingham. In 1948, we had a Board of Tree and Park Commissioners, but we abolished it by town meeting vote in 1991 before the CPA was enacted. So in the absence of that board, even though the REC took over almost all the functions of the, uh, Tree and Park Commissioners, except the tree work, which is done by the DPW, uh, another statute unrelated to the CPA says that the Board of Selectmen will be deemed to act in the capacity of the Board of Park Commissioners. That's why in Hingham, the Board of Selectmen holds the fifth permanent seat on the CPC and not the REC. You might call it a historical fluke or a legislative oversight. At any rate, our bylaw setting up the CPC is Article 38, and it specifies that our CPC shall consist of nine members or four more than the required statutory minimum. These four seats are sometimes, sometimes called "at-large seats," and they're filled by appointment. The Board of Selectmen gets to appoint two of them, and the moderator gets to appoint two. So as presently constituted, our CPC includes one selectman plus two members appointed by the selectmen, representing one-third of the CPC's membership. This article would amend our bylaw by providing that one CPC seat shall be held by a REC Commissioner designated by the REC itself. But because the CPC already has the maximum number of nine seats, one of those would have to be allocated to the REC on a permanent basis, and there would seem to be two ways to skin this cat. We could amend our bylaw to change the selectman seat to the REC seat, or we could amend it to convert one of the four at-large appointed positions to the REC seat. The latter alternative would mean that either the Board of Selectmen or the moderator would lose one of the two appointments each of them now has. But the first alternative, eliminating the selectman permanent seat, would reflect the reality that the REC and not the selectman is the functional equivalent of the Board of Park Commissioners that the town abolished in 1991. But there's a potential legal problem if we substitute a REC seat for the selectman seat. The statute, Chapter 45, Section 2, that deems the Board of Selectmen to act as the park commissioners, if there isn't a Board of Park Commissioners, is still on the books. It wasn't amended when the CPA was enacted. So thankfully, we don't have to resolve that legal issue here tonight. We can avoid it altogether by adopting the second alternative, that is, by removing one at-large appointment from either the Board of Selectmen or the moderator and dedicating that seat to the REC. To the advisory committee, it seems most fair and reasonable to take that one appointment from the Board of Selectmen because it now controls three of the nine memberships, which seems a bit much. Under this amendment, the Board of Selectmen would still have one permanent seat... Are they staring daggers at me?[1756.65][1756.65](LAUGHTER). The Board of Selectmen would still have one permanent seat and one appointment. That would leave the moderator's two appointments unchanged and place the Board of Selectmen and the moderator in better balance. Town council has advised that there is no legal reason why we can't make this change to our bylaw, and rest assured, there's nothing radical at all about this proposed change. Our research shows that most cities and towns that have accepted the CPA already include a member of the REC Commission on their CPC. The Community Preservation Coalition tells us that approximately 60 Massachusetts towns do so already. We've listed 14 comparable towns in our comment, from Cohasset to Concord. We’ve listed 14 comparable towns in our comment, from Cohasset to Concord, Norwell to Sitewatt. We can’t find any towns that have a permanent seat for the Board of Selectmen. Apparently, unlike Hingham, they had Boards of Park Commissioners when the CPC was enacted, when the CPA was enacted. All these towns have used or are using CPA funds for recreational purposes, as well as for historical preservation, housing, and conservation. Significantly, past and present members of our CPC have expressed their support for permanent REC membership. The Advisory Committee believes that there’s good and sufficient reason to make this change, and to have the Recreation Commission permanently represented on the CPC.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Is there further debate? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee, which is set out at page 48 of your booklets. This motion requires for its adoption a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Next, we come to Article 30. Article 30 is set out at page 48 of your booklets. The comment of the Advisory Committee says at the right side on page 49, “For these reasons,” below number 5, “For these reasons, the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust is proposing to amend the bylaw to improve the ability of the trust to accomplish its mission while providing adequate checks and balances over its activities to the town. The proposed changes would remove the requirement for an allocation plan, which is defined, and instead would require the trust to provide the town every year with a detailed and comprehensive accounting and description of its activities.” So this motion relates to the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust, and it would remove the requirement for a so-called allocation plan, and instead provide that the trust furnish to the community an annual town meeting, a transparent and detailed financial report on the year’s activities, all as is more particularly set forth in the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee. That motion requires for its adoption a majority vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. The motion under Article 30 is adopted. Article 31. The proponent of Article 31 has requested that no action be taken on this article, that is, the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee. The recommended motion is for no action. All in favor of no action, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted for no action. We now come to Article 32. Article 32 is set forth at page 52 in your booklets, and the recommendation of the Advisory Committee was in their supplemental report. I will read the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee on Article 32. It reads as follows. “That the town amend the general bylaws of the town of Hingham, adopted March 13, 1939, as heretofore amended, by amending Article 23, entitled ‘Sewer Appropriation Bylaw,’ by replacing Section 1B Roman III thereof with the following.” Roman III, quote, “The estimated rate of the assessment upon the owners of the land to be bettered based upon the method of assessment voted by the town and allowed by Massachusetts General Laws.” That is the recommendation of the Advisory Committee. Is there debate? Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jim Taylor, 3 Griss Mill Lane, speaking for the majority of the Advisory Committee. The next warrant article you will hear and vote on is a technical clarification, an amendment relative to existing sewer disclosure requirements. Article 32 is an amendment to the existing town bylaw that was created and approved by town meeting in 1983, which requires that the voters at town meeting be provided with certain information relative to the construction of new sewer systems within Hingham. You received such a document at last year’s town meeting. This information includes the list of streets in which the system is to be installed, as well as a financial impact statement, which includes the cost of the project, the estimated property tax impact for each impacted property owner, and the, and I quote, “The estimated rate of the assessment upon the owners of the land abutting on that part of any street, road, or way, or portion thereof in which a sewer is to be constructed.” This last line basically refers to the betterment method, which is applied to each impacted property owner. And someone with a legal eye could infer that the betterment method that this is referring to is the frontage method, which bases your assessment on the amount of frontage your property contains. However, Massachusetts state law allows for different types of betterments, including frontage, unit method, and area method. The unit method was disclosed and applied to the Ship Cottage Street project last year. This warrant article seeks to replace this ambiguous language with the language contained in the warrant article, which the moderator just read. To paraphrase, it basically reads that the betterment method to be used needs to be the one allowed by Massachusetts General Law and voted and approved for the project by town meeting. The need for this amendment was brought to our attention by a Good Samaritan resident who believes, as does town council, that if we do not make and approve this amendment, the town has potential legal exposure for future sewer projects. It is for this reason that the Advisory Committee is in favor of this warrant article. But the story doesn’t end here. In the course of the research that was done, it was recently discovered that the town bylaw that was passed in 1983 actually had a second page with two additional disclosure requirements. One being a statement by the Board of Health indicating the condition and need for said project based on a survey of the streets to be sewered, as well as its disclosure of other information that was deemed appropriate. Due to a clerical error, only in Hingham, these two additional requirements were not submitted to the Attorney General’s office, who ultimately signs off on each warrant article before they become effective. Therefore, the Attorney General’s final approval didn’t include these two lines, and the town record, the official document of the town’s bylaws, did not contain them. For the last 30 years, the town and Sewer Commission has been operating under the disclosure requirements that didn’t include these last two items, and the Board of Health was never aware of their required involvement. Based on this finding, the town clerk and town council are seeking to rectify this submission. However, we’ve been assured that that can only impact projects moving forward. To be clear, the omitted portion of the bylaw has not been enforced and cannot be applied retroactively to any previously approved sewer project. This does, though, provide us with a great opportunity to review and develop a fair process for future sewer-ing projects, as well as to determine appropriate and consistent betterment methods. To this end, we have received commitments from both the town administrator, as well as from Selectman Rabuffo, that this review will begin to occur shortly after town meeting, and will include all interested parties, including the Sewer Commission, the Board of Health, the Advisory Committee, and other interested citizens. Remember, though, that the warrant article up for discussion is an amendment towards the existing disclosure requirement only, which is essentially the information that needs to be passed out at town meeting. It does not contemplate a change in the process and procedure for all those, the process and procedure for new sewer projects. This will be done in a public manner, for all those interested in participating, and with the review and public input it deserves. This amendment just protects the town from potential legal and financial exposure, and for that reason, the Advisory Committee voted 12 to 1 in favor of this article, and urges you to do the same. Thank you.
Dr. Eldridge, for the minority of the Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Elizabeth Eldridge, representing Minority View from the Advisory Committee. I’m here in front of you today because I’m concerned about a lack of process and a lack of formal sewer betterment policy that’s related to this article. I am concerned that we are changing our sewer by-
Can you get a little closer to the mic?
I’m sorry. I am concerned that we are changing our sewer bylaw to expeditiously move forward with last year’s sewer article, Article 38, rather than changing the bylaw because it’s the best thing for the town in the long run. By changing the wording of this bylaw, I am worried that we are putting the cart before the horse, that we are allowing our method of sewer betterment to change before we have a well-thought-out betterment policy in hand. Let me give you some history and some context. We’re going to go back to 1955. Eisenhower was president, and it was the same year that the FDA approved the Salk polio vaccine. Meanwhile, at town meeting in Hingham, the town voted to accept several acts of special legislation allowing for the creation, construction, and operation of the North Sewer District in Hingham. One of the articles passed, Article 68, stated that the frontage method would be the town’s method of betterment. Since the passing of this article in 1955, we have never voted once to change our method of betterment for sewer financing. As a result, the frontage method of betterment still stands today. More recently, but well over a year ago, a Sewer Commission meeting was held. At the meeting, one of the Advisory Committee members requested that the Sewer Commission create a publicly-vetted, well-written, written policy of sewer betterment for use in the industrial park and for the Ship and Cottage Street areas. One of the Sewer Commissioners replied that a, quote, “Well-crafted, broadly-based policy that will stand the test of time” would be put together with town council, hopefully by the end of the summer in 2012. We have not seen this policy yet. Subsequently, at Article 36, the placement of the sewer in Ship and Cottage Street neighborhood was passed at the 2012 town meeting last year. But it did not use the frontage method of betterment. During the reconsideration process, town council pined that there was nothing illegal with regards to Article 38. This year, citizens submitted a warrant article, Article 34, to revoke part of last year’s Ship and Cottage Street warrant article, for various reasons. One of the reasons was that the frontage method of betterment was not used within this new sewer area. This year, on March 14th, after the Advisory Committee voted on Article 34, town council expressed concern about whether the recommended motion from last year specifically referenced the betterment method being proposed for the project. Five days later, on the 19th of March, the selectmen held a meeting during which they reopened the warrant specifically to insert two new articles, Articles 32 and 33. So the question is, what are the consequences of accepting this article, Article 32, this last-minute bylaw change, especially before we even have a betterment policy in place? I don’t think we really know. For example, no one has discussed what the costs and benefits of other betterment methods compared to the current approved frontage method are. Should we not have one fair standard that is town-wide, rather than leave it to the whim of each new sewer extension? Is it possible to have different methods of betterment within the same sewer district, where you pay significantly more because your sewer was placed only two years later within the same sewer district, but perhaps by using a different method of betterment? What if the sewer comes to your neighborhood and you are forced to pay the same betterment as your neighbor, while he lives in an eight-bedroom house on a three-acre lot, while you live in a two-bedroom house on 0.2 acres? If we should decide to apply the uniform unit method, what will be our definition of a unit, especially when applying it to a mixed residential-commercial district? Will you pay the same betterment on your small house as the massive Whole Foods store down the street? So the question is, do we really want to change a sewer bylaw without thinking through the potential problems that might arise? Do we want to change our betterment method without a solid and well-vetted policy from the Sewer Commission in our hands first? I am concerned that you and I, as individuals, and we as a town, may be leaving ourselves exposed to a horribly ill-defined framework with so many potential future problems and associated costs. Is this 11th-hour bylaw change really for the long term, or is it just a quick fix for a problem that we ourselves created last year when we didn’t do our homework? We must uphold the integrity of our legislative process. We need a fully-developed and well-understood sewer policy first before implementing such a change.
You have one minute.
Going back to 1955, imagine if the FDA took the same approach to the polio vaccine with no attention to detail and duty. Where would we be right now? We really need to think this through before we change this bylaw, and not just for the convenience of one neighborhood. Please vote no.
Is there further debate? If not, we come to vote on the recommend, on Mr. Patch.
Tom Patch, Ship Street. You’ve heard what the proponents assert is the basis for Article 32. I rise to speak as a member of the legislator branch of town government to inform you, my co-legislators, of the other side of the story. I dare say, by the time we get through Articles 32 through 34, some of you may manifest a nervous tic upon the future utterance of the word sewer. But before I go further, I want you to know, I did inquire of the moderator if we could possibly join these articles for discussion, but in his wisdom, he felt it would be best if we considered each separately. Article 32 is one of the two warrant articles inserted by the Board of Selectmen, the executive branch of town government, at what may fairly be characterized as the 11th-hour aspiration of fixing one of the many fatal flaws that permeated the process leading to, and the votes on, Article 38, from the 2012 Annual Town Meeting, also known as the Town-Sponsored Sewer Extension Project on Ship and Cottage Street. In this particular instance, the sewer bylaw, so-called. And I say so-called because there is a substantial question whether we have a sewer bylaw. Please bear with me while I provide a little detail, which is based upon my research of town reports, town warrants, warrant supplements, town meeting transcripts, and other town records. In 1983, as a result of a petition or warrant article, Annual Town Meeting unanimously voted for the creation of a sewer bylaw as crafted by a predecessor advisory committee. That bylaw came about because of the dissatisfaction with the process that led to a town meeting warrant article and vote in 1982 for the town to undertake additional sewer-ing in the North Sewer District, the Bonnybrier area, the Upper Central Street, based on public health needs. At that time, the town only had one sewer district, the North Sewer District. As part of accepting the 1945-46 special legislation creating the district, in 1955, Annual Town Meeting unanimously voted to select the frontage-uniform fixed rate as the method of betterment assessment in the North Sewer District. This has never been lawfully changed, if it can be lawfully changed. And this selection of fixed frontage rate betterment assessment is reflected in the so-called sewer bylaw as part of the information that must be provided to town meeting in accordance with the requirements of this so-called sewer bylaw as a condition precedent to town meeting voting under a publicly-sponsored sewer project. So despite what you may have already heard or read, or will hear hereafter, or read tonight, nothing was provided in the 2012 Annual Town Meeting on the frontage rate, which is the only method lawfully available for betterment assessment available to town meeting for the Ship Street Cottage Street proposal. And the frontage method was not merely implied in the so-called sewer bylaw, as the comment to Article 32 asserts. Rather, it is inescapable that so-called sewer bylaw used the term “rate” referencing the existing frontage betterment method documents of town meeting transcripts and other documents if, excuse me, if the documents are reviewed, if only for context. Yet incredibly, just as a result of my research and that of another, there turns out there’s another substantial question, whether we have a lawful bylaw. And essentially, what this boils down to has been referred to by Mr. Taylor, and what the problem is, in 1983, the bylaw was supposed to be submitted to the Attorney General. It was submitted in 1987. The problem was, the second page was not submitted. And that had a material part of the bylaw, which was public health need determination for a publicly-sponsored sewer project by the town. That was the whole purpose of the North Sewer District. At one point, there was an rainfall pipe going off Crow Point, 700 feet, dumping raw sewage out into the harbor, and it used to come around into the inner harbor. out into the harbor, and it used to come around into the inner harbor. So the question as I see it is whether the failure to submit that which the 1983 town meeting voted as a sewer bylaw renders the AG's action in 1987 null and void. That in turn raises the question whether a warrant article can be amended by, a warrant article can amend a bylaw that does not have legal existence. In sum, my points amount to this. This warrant article seeks to address, and I believe inappropriately, one of the many fatal flaws that has become manifest with respect to the process leading to and the vote on last year's warrant article. The appropriate way to address this issue, along with the other sewer issues, is for town meeting to recognize that the best interest of the town mandates that the town government must regroup, undertake a comprehensive, intelligent, informed review of all the uncertainties, infirmities, flaws, and irreparable errors, eliminate all associated liabilities, and then, and only then, to move forward within that appropriate framework how, to frame how sewer extensions should be implemented in the North Sewer District, if not the remainder of the town. I ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of town meeting. We all did just become aware of this lost provision in the last few weeks, and we did seek to rectify it.
Right into the mic.
And we did seek to rectify it. All this article essentially does-
Michael, can you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael Salerno, 17 Kilmer Road, Chairman of the Sewer Commission, speaking on behalf of the Sewer Commission. All this article essentially does is clarify the current bylaw to reflect the current mass general law allowing for different betterments. If other boards do want to weigh in on this clarification, we, as the Sewer Commission, would entertain and want to work with them to ensure that any new ideas are fully vetted. I and the rest of the board would be willing and encourage a working group over the next year so we can review and develop these processes. I urge you to vote in favor of this article.
You have three minutes.
I absolutely have that tick that Mr. Patch referred to. I just want to clarify a couple of points that have been brought up previously by my colleague and others.
Speak, speak more.
Sorry. My name's James Taylor. You'd think I know how to speak into the mic. I just want to clarify a couple of points that the other speakers brought up. Number one, this bylaw amendment is only a disclosure amendment. It has nothing to do with the process. The process will be reviewed and hopefully bettered moving forward, but this amendment is protecting the town legally and financially moving forward. So by putting off the approval of this amendment, you're opening up the town to an exposure that we really don't need. So I once again urge you to vote in favor of this amendment. Thank you.
Is there further discussion?
You can identify yourself again. Oh, sorry. Tom Patch, Ship Street. The only exposure that the town has is if it insists on going forward with a fatally flawed project, and that is the Ship Street Cottage Street project. Common sense says, when you're made aware of fatal flaws, you stop, you regroup, you engage in an informed, intelligent determination of what is right, and then you go forward. I'm incredulous at this almost insistence to go forward for the sake of one project. And at this point, so you all know, the project only has expended $34,000 in engineering fees. The Department of Environmental Protection has refused to issue an extension permit because we have problems on North Street. There's a defective pipe on North Street, and North Street's under a moratorium that can't be opened for two more years. So there's plenty of time to stop and regroup and do the right thing as part of a comprehensive review. I think that's prudent public policy. So again, I would ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommendation of the advisory committee on Article 32. This recommended motion requires for its adoption a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is passed. If seven voters should rise and doubt the call that I have made, we will then proceed to have a standing ballot. More than seven voters having risen, we will have a standing ballot. If you'd all please take your seats. Every voter who wishes to participate needs to first have a seat. Of course, our guests who are seated in the guest section may not vote. I'd ask the tellers to come forward. As I said last night, when we have a standing vote, we do it from the front to the back. So I'll now ask that all those who are in favor of the adoption of the recommended motion under Article 32, I'd ask you all to please stand and to remain standing until your vote has been counted and you have been instructed to sit. I ask you all please to take your seats. Now I'd ask to rise all those who voted no, and please remain standing until your vote You may resume sitting, please. The results of the standing vote are as follows. Yes votes, 179. No votes, 120. Vote carries, 179 to 120, more than a majority having voted in favor of the recommended motion. We now come, please, we now come to Article 33. The recommended motion of the advisory committee is set forth in its supplemental report, and I will read an abstract of the recommended motion as it exists in the supplemental report. That the town, in connection with the sewer project approved under Article 38 of the 2012 Annual Town Meeting, in accordance with applicable law, vote to provide, one, that assessments authorized under such article be made upon the owners of land on Ship Street and Cottage Street by a Uniform Unit Method; two, that the town shall bear no share of the cost of such project, the full cost of such project to be borne by the owners of such land; and, three, that assessments made by the town for such project bear interest at the rate of interest chargeable to the town from the 30th day after the assessments have been committed to the collector. That is the recommended motion of the advisory committee. It requires for its adoption a majority vote. Is there discussion? Mr. Taylor for the majority of the advisory committee. Be sure to introduce yourself, please, and speak directly into the microphone.
Jim Taylor, 3 Grisbane Lane, speaking for the majority of the advisory committee. This is another article related to technical clarifications of a previous vote. Article 38 of the 2012 town meeting was initiated by a group of residents from Ship and Cottage Streets. It requested authorization for the town to appropriate or borrow up to $600,000 to design and construct an additional sewer system affecting properties along those streets. This article was recommended for approval by the Sewer Commission, the Board of Selectmen and Advisory Committee. Pursuant to the Hingham general bylaws, which we spoke of in the previous article, a handout was made available at the 2012 town meeting. It specified the scope of the proposed project and contained a financial impact statement that included the estimated cost of the project, how it would be paid for, which was 100% of the affected residents, the estimated property tax impact, and the betterment method that was to be applied. This article was required and received a two-thirds affirmative vote during the second night of town meeting. A motion to reconsider was made and defeated at the start of the third night of town meeting. While the combination of the 2012 town meeting content, the handout, and the discussion of Article 38 provided town meeting voters with all the information required by applicable mass general laws and the special acts that pertain to sewer projects, it was brought to the attention of the town by, again, a good Samaritan citizen, and concurred with by town council, that it is advisable that the betterment method and cost apportionment for the sewer project be specified within a town meeting vote, which is allowable prior to the betterment being charged. The article before you does that. Additionally, this article seeks to lower the interest rate charged to affected residents of Ship and Cottage Streets who do not immediately pay the full amount of their betterment by passing along the low borrowing costs that the town enjoys, which is presently approximately 2%, rather than the default rate of 5%, saving residents significant interest expense over the life of the betterment. As a reminder, the article currently being considered and before you is not a referendum on the Ship and Cottage Street project itself. You will have that opportunity to revoke the authority provided and appropriation made for that project in the next article to be discussed. This article is merely a technical clarification of a previous vote and is being made to limit the legal and financial liability that the town may have. And for that reason, a supermajority of the advisory committee recommends that you vote in favor of this warrant article. Thank you.
Dr. Eldridge for the minority of the advisory committee. Again, please remember to identify yourself and speak directly into the mic.
Elizabeth Eldridge, speaking on behalf of the advisory committee minority view. I think Jim and I are going to be Mr. and Mrs. Sewer before long. Quite honestly, I've really struggled with how to approach this discussion, knowing that the sewer bylaws are really complicated and confusing. If you go back historically and look at them, they seem kind of odd, but if you go back and look at all the town meeting transcripts and minutes, you really start to understand why people have done what they did. I could probably go through all of the various bylaws and problems that are reflected in the advisory committee comment in the warrant, but I don't think it's really worth boring you and perhaps confusing you beyond belief. But I am worried that passing this article may place the town in a vulnerable position of liability, and even more importantly, I am concerned about the lack of infrastructure when it comes to policymaking within the sewer department. I have problems with this article. To me, it seems like we are putting a Band-Aid on a deep simmering wound. Beneath the level of the surface, we have real problems which we are not addressing, but instead, in Article 33, we are trying to just get a quick fix of the problems before us. It is only a matter of time before the badness lying below the surface starts to rear its ugly head if we do not stop and deal with these underlying structural issues now. Town council opines that this article will, Article 33, will fix or "clarify," in political speak, the problems that have been shown to us by an extremely well-versed citizen who opposed and still opposes last year's Article 38. I believe it's the same citizen that Jim Taylor spoke about. As a matter of fact, if it had not been for this particular citizen diligently trying to tell us over the year all these problems, I doubt any of us might have ever uncovered these mistakes so soon. As you might recall, at last year's town meeting, our town council opined that there was nothing illegal about the Ship and Cottage Street warrant article. But now we are recognizing these mistakes. So where do we go from here? There is no doubt in my mind that multiple mistakes and errors were made in the pathway to passing Article 38 last year. It almost seems like a cascade, one leading to another. They keep on showing up. At this point, given the errors that we continue to uncover, I am concerned about the risk of the liability to the town if we go forward on this trail. At least one citizen and perhaps others have threatened to take us to court if we continue forward. And while I am not one of those people that reacts to threats positively, I am truly concerned that we have too many mistakes here. Mistakes that are merely a manifestation of our lack of an underlying structure in the policies of the sewer department. By exposing these errors in Article 38, we are able to demonstrate the deficiencies in our lack of underlying policies. And if nothing else, this demonstrates to me that we have much work ahead of us before we attempt to implement a sewer system in the South Hingham Industrial Park area. we attempt to implement a sewer system in the South Hingham Industrial Park area. Rather than place this Band-Aid on the 2012 Article 38, I believe that it would be prudent to stop, revoke what parts remain undone in Article 38 of 2012, develop a foundation of policies for the betterment of sewers, and then proceed with this project once again. I think revoking this sewer project, this 2012 sewer project, seems to place us as a town in the safest position liability-wise. If the Cottage and Ship Street project is truly valid, it should pass without pause once we have a scaffolding of policies upon which to rely. But I believe that the only real way to fix these problems in Article 38 from last year is to stop and go back and do it correctly. How many times do I say that to my children? In the meanwhile, should the residents of Cottage and Ship Street not want to wait for these changes to occur because there are problems on North Street and getting the DEP approval, they do indeed have the option of placing their own sewer lines in privately, as so many other citizens have done in this town. We have only spent money on engineering plans so far, plans that do not go away and that can be actually sold back to the residents should they decide to pursue things independently. So in summary, I ask you, please, let us stop everything, discuss these errors, just what we do in medicine.
You have one minute.
And go back and do it right. Minimize our risk on behalf of the town. Vote no on Article 33. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Patch.
Tom Patch, Ship Street. I'm not going to beat this thing to death, but you've heard what the proponents assert is the basis for Article 33. While I greatly respect Advisory Committee member Jim Taylor, in all candor, one could reasonably view Article 33 and the comment thereto as a not-so-thinly-veiled attempt to render moot warrant Article 34. And I'm the person who brought warrant Article 34, and I think I'm the person Jim is referring to as the good Samaritan. This is apparent if you just read the Advisory Committee comment to Article 33. Yet when the facts, the actual facts, are measured against the assertions contained in the comment, those assertions can be reasonably viewed as an attempt to craft a legal defense based on the fallacy of ipse dixit reasoning, which is an assertion made but not proved. That is, the facts are what they say they are, rather than, in fact, what they actually are. Unfortunately, as I think Liz pointed out, it's an impossible task to expose the incorrect assertions in the course of six minutes, excuse me, minutes. And yet, that attempt speaks volumes because Article 33 and the comment thereto not only failed to establish the defense to and correct that which transpired last year, but further served to acknowledge the correctness of my position, that the process leading to and the vote on Article 38 and the authority and appropriation authorized thereby are irreparably flawed. I will not belabor the point. Article 33 does not serve to accomplish its ostensible purpose. Instead, in my view, it serves only to compound the liabilities to the town. The appropriate way to address this issue, along with all other sewer issues, is for Town Meeting to recognize that the best interests of the town mandates that the town government must regroup, undertake a comprehensive, informed review of all the uncertainties, infirmities, flaws, irreparable errors, eliminate associated liabilities, and then, and only then, to move forward within that appropriate framework for how sewer extensions should be implemented in the North Sewer District, if not the remainder of the town. And just remember, sewer wastewater management is going to drive the future of this town. We're at that point where, in order to have further growth, there's going to have to be sewer. And just remember what that brings. What it brings for a residential, you have unlimited number of bedrooms. We've just spent a lot of money buying a piece of property to prevent a negative impact on our school system as a result of an affordable housing development. When you put sewer in, there is no longer the limitations on the number of bedrooms that you can have on your property as a result of Title V sanitary waste requirements. So just keep that in mind, what you're dealing with here. This is a big issue, and it's been lying dormant now for about 30, 40 years. So, again, I remind you where we stand on this Ship Street Cottage Street project. We've only put in about $30,000 to $34,000 in engineering. The DEP has not issued the extension permit. They're not going to issue the extension permit until the situation on North Street gets resolved. North Street is under a moratorium where it can only be lifted in a state of emergency, and this problem on North Street's been going on since 2006, and it hasn't been paid attention to. So, the reality of this situation, we as a town have a rare opportunity to do the right thing. We have the luxury. Let's take that opportunity. Thank you very much. Vote no.
Mr. Salerno. Please be sure to identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Salerno, 17 Kilmer Road, Chairman of the Sewer Commission, speaking on behalf of the Sewer Commission. This article is a technical clarification to Article 38 of the 2012 Annual Town Meeting. It discloses which method of betterment would be used for that specific project. Further, it states that the community as a whole will not bear any of the cost of the project, but the neighborhood would bear 100% of the cost of the project. And it will give the neighbors the benefit of the interest rate in which they will pay and we will receive through bonding. I do urge you to vote in favor of this article.
Is there further debate? Mr. Patch.
I just want to make sure you understand—
Identify your place.
Tom Patch, Ship Street. I just want to make sure you understand something. The town, after just spending $3 million to buy a piece of property to prevent a significant housing development, is now going to act as the bank and the contractor for a sewer extension that's going to result in additional bedrooms and additional development, at least one brand-new house lot that the owners have already done their Form A division, and there's two other properties on Cottage Street that can be subdivided and result in three additional house lots as a result of this project. It just boggles my mind that we can vote, on the one hand, to prevent this pressure from coming on the town from additional residential development, and then we're turning around and enabling this on the other side. And really, what's worse about this project is they're taking money out of their neighbors' pockets to fund this infrastructure when it could actually be done privately, like so many other people in the town have been required to do. So I ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
I'm Nelson Ross, 18 Bradford Road. Legal questions have been raised. I think it would be very helpful to hear from Council for the town just what the legal status is. Thank you.
I'd recognize John Coughlin, Town Council, to respond to Mr. Ross's question.
Good evening, John Coughlin. When you ask the legal status, I guess I'm wanting something a little bit more specific. What in particular are you looking for?
Questions have been raised as to whether or not the town is going to be in legal jeopardy. I'd just like to know, if we vote in favor of this, are we creating a legal problem? And if we don't, if we vote no, are we creating a legal problem?
My response to that would be, I don't think you can control whether someone is going to sue the town or not. What you have before you is a bylaw that simply takes what happened last year. My understanding is the town voted to authorize bonding last year for this project. This is an amendment to clarify the method of betterment that is going to be imposed on this project, and it also allows the homeowners to have the interest rate benefit of the town. But the project has already been voted and approved last year, and I think that this amendment is just clarifying the method for assessment, and I don't think that it creates any additional legal liability for the town.
Ms. Johnson, Chairman of the Advisory Committee.
Karen Johnson, 16 Berkeley Circle, for the Advisory Committee. Let me, I'm going to take one quick crack at this. First, I'd just like to tell you we are 12 to 1 in favor of this article. Now, the way I understand, I've got a tick on a lot of issues, drainage, sewer, you name it. We've spent a long time thinking about all these articles, along with the other elected and appointed boards, before we come before you tonight with our recommendations. And the way I understand this is, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts wants the town to understand a few things about sewer projects before you come to vote on those. It wants you to know, among other things, what's the betterment method? How are property owners going to be charged for these projects? And what's the town's contribution to the project, if any at all? So our disclosure bylaw, that you heard about in Article 32, says to us, listen, state law requires that you provide this information to the citizens of the town before they come to vote on a piece of paper that's disclosed at Town Meeting. And so we did that last year. So Town Meeting knew the betterment method, it knew the town contribution, it knew the streets to be sewed. But what the Commonwealth of Massachusetts also wants you to do with these projects is say those things when you vote. And so even though we had all that information, everybody understood what the project was, everybody understood it was going to be bettered by the unit method, and everybody understood that the town's contribution was zero, we did not say those things in the recommended motion. And so, in the course of reviewing the background for Article 34, which you will hear next, we came through this process and we thought, okay, we didn't say the magic words. We knew all of the information, but we didn't say it in the recommended motion. What Article 33 asks you to do tonight is say the magic words for the information that you knew last year. And that's, so then, on the legal issue, as we ran through this process, again, with respect to Article 34, you know, council said, well, if you put all these things together, right, you put the disclosure together, you put the comment together, you put the article together, and the recommended motion together, and you read it all together, you satisfy the legal requirements. But the statute says, vote. And the recommended motion is the vote. So we didn't precisely say it in the vote. So legal counsel has advised us that, out of an abundance of caution, we clarify or supplement, or however else you want to term it, that vote with these magic words under 33. It doesn't change anything. It supplements and provides the information that we all knew and we all voted on more than once last year with respect to this project. Thank you.
Unless there is further debate, we will come to vote on the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee under Article 33. The recommended motion is set forth in the supplemental report of the Advisory Committee and requires for its adoption a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, no.
No!
The ayes clearly have it. The motion is adopted. We now come to Article 34. I would invite you to make one clerical correction on page 53. There is a reference on page 53 on the right-hand side in the paragraph that begins, the first full paragraph on that right-hand column that begins second in reviewing applicable legislation and so forth. Three lines up from the bottom of that paragraph, there is a parenthetical reference to Article 34. That should be to Article 32. That's a correction in the commentary from the Advisory Committee. This article relates to a proposal to revoke certain authority granted pursuant to Article 38 at the 2012 Annual Town Meeting relating to the project at Ship and Cottage Streets. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set out at page 53, and it was that no action be taken on this article. I have had furnished to me an affirmative motion offered by Mr. Patch, and I will read it in summary fashion. It states as follows: Recommended that the town revoke so much of the authority provided and appropriation made under the affirmative vote approving Article 38 of the 2012 Annual Town Meeting as set forth in the article. So this would revoke the authority that was given under Article 38 of the 2012 Annual Town Meeting. Is there a second on the motion? The motion has been duly made and seconded, so we will now focus on the affirmative motion of Mr. Patch. Mr. Patch.
Tom Patch, Ship Street. It's kind of interesting that the moderator caught the error. I did too. And it's a small detail error, but it's an exemplar of what is so wrong about the process that led to and the vote on Article 38 last year. And that is a lack of attention to detail. And when it comes to government action imposing involuntary liens on property, the importance of dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's is critical. Last year, what was supposed to be the process failed. It failed because of the lack of attention to detail, both as to legal requirements prior Town Meeting actions and other factual details. As a result, the town was exposed to significant liability. One aspect of that liability was the failure to recognize that the North Sewer District, in the North Sewer District, the method of betterment assessment was voted in 1955 to be based upon fixed-rate frontage. You've heard from the proponents repeatedly, and I listened to this, and I almost think I'm sitting in a courtroom listening to lawyers make closing statements, because they're telling you, you knew this and you knew that. Did you really know? They didn't even know that frontage was the only legal method that was available for consideration by Town Meeting last year. Yet they want you to believe, oh, we were talking about the unit method. No. What they were talking about was dividing the cost evenly, which is not the unit method, which is exactly what they did on Central Street, not the unit method. So there is no definition. They have no definitions of what the unit is, but yet they want you to believe you knew they were talking about the unit method. I respectfully submit, you didn't know, and that's part of the problem. Three times, Town Council has taken the position that everything about the process and vote last year were legally correct. Three times, Town Council has been shown to be wrong, showing we're all human. If anything, that the selectmen saw fit to bring the past two warrant articles is an acknowledgement that the process leading to and the vote on Article 38 last year went terribly wrong. What I am hearing is to the effect of, well, we'll make sure the process is correct for all new projects. What I am not hearing is why the Ship and Cottage Street proposal cannot be determined through that same correct process. What is at risk is $34,000 in engineering costs expended so far if the project never goes forward, even as a private project, where the private proponents can do what the town is doing with Avalon, buying their engineering. But the other exposure is the entire cost of the project plus attorney fees to be laid on the backs of— on the backs of the taxpayers. I can assure you that my analysis of the issue causes me to conclude there are unresolved issues that leave the town at substantial risk. Let me close by stating what Article 34 seeks to achieve. It seeks to eliminate the liability exposure of the taxpayers as a result of the fatally flawed process leading to and vote on Article 38 last year. It does not forever mean that there will never, or never can be, a sewer line extension on Ship and Cottage Street, be it town-sponsored or privately-sponsored. What Article 34 does is to ensure that whatever the outcome is done, it is done according to the process that have been and will be put in place after an informed, intelligent review, so that even if the outcome is not what a person wants, they can live with it. That is how we must make these decisions, because it preserves the sense of community. Thank you.
Is there further debate on 34? Mary Power.
Good evening, Mary Power, 1 King Philip Path, speaking for the majority of the Advisory Committee. You know, at some point during tonight's discussion, you may have thought to yourself, "Gosh, I'm hearing the word flawed quite a bit, and I'm hearing a lot of concerns, and, you know, maybe it's a good idea that we stop and we make these citizens go through the process again and get another two-thirds vote to make sure we've gotten it right." And to be honest, there have been times during this past year where Jim Taylor and I, sitting in sewer meetings, have asked ourselves that same question. But in the end, after much thought, informed discussion with the entire Advisory Committee, and guidance from Town Council, we concluded that revoking this project is a drastic step that is neither warranted nor appropriate. It doesn't seem appropriate to the citizens who initiated this request, followed the process, and received a legal two-thirds vote from Town Meeting last year. It also didn't seem appropriate to put current ratepayers in a situation where they would have to absorb $34,000 in sunk costs through either reduced services or higher rates if Article 34 were to pass and the project doesn't come to fruition. And so by a vote of 11 to 1, we recommend a no vote on the affirmative motion before you for four reasons. Number one, this project is in good legal standing. Our Town Council has spent considerable time reviewing each of the legal issues raised by the petitioners. They have determined that Articles 32 and 33, which you have just passed, are the only requirements needed to allow this project to go forward in a legal manner. The Advisory Committee concurs with that decision. Number two, the project process used to bring the Ship and Cottage Street sewer project to Town Meeting last year is consistent with our town's Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan, or CWMP. It has been suggested that the project shouldn't be built, because it's not specifically referenced in the CWMP. However, if you look in the 2010 Town Annual Report of the Committee, it states, quote, "The plan is not intended to limit the opportunity for implementing other wastewater management alternatives in identified study areas if new, more cost-effective technologies emerge over time and neighborhood and town interest is sufficient to pursue them." The CWMP also lists criteria for expanding sewer service, many of which this project meets. And with regard to resident approval, the CWMP states, quote, "The sewer commission connection policy centers on the principle of majority rule, where any expansion within a sewer district must have a majority of homeowners along a particular unsewered roadway request a conversion to town sewers." This project had a 71% approval rate last year, and we were told in our public hearings this year that a few of the no and undecided voters had changed their mind. Number three, since this project is being entirely funded by the affected residents and has no impact on town finances, the Advisory Committee believes it is most appropriate to leave any determination of wants and needs to the residents. We don't think it's our place to evaluate the efficiency of someone's septic system or to infer any motivation for seeking sewer service. Four, we worry about the precedent that passing Article 34 could set. Imagine the potential impact to our Town Meeting process and even our AAA bond rating if multi-year capital projects begin finding their way back to Town Meeting for reconsideration. So after much discussion, we concluded that Town Meeting had all the necessary information to make an informed decision last year, and there are not sufficient compelling reasons to support Article 34. The Ship and Cottage Sewer Project is two years in the making. Your elected and appointed Town officials have spent hundreds of hours working to make sure it's in good standing. Admittedly, the process has been bumpy. However, the majority of the Advisory Committee believes we have a responsibility to the Ship and Cottage Street residents and last year's Town Meeting to carry out the wishes they expressed in what we believe was an open, fair, legal, and democratic process.
You have one minute.
While last year's decision was not unanimous, we don't think 100% support is a reasonable standard to apply to this or any project. The Advisory Committee believes that it's time for everyone, even those who do not agree, to accept the decision made by the 2012 Town Meeting and build the sewer on Ship and Cottage Streets. After careful consideration and by a vote of 11 to 1, the Advisory Committee recommends that you vote no action on the affirmative motion.
Is there further debate? Yes, sir.
Ned Gahl, 25, Ship Street. To me, this is a fatally flawed project. We know damn well that there's errors in it, and it's going to collapse at some point. Why is everyone just marching along, whistling past the graveyard? I think this is nuts. And I think we should reconsider last year's vote and start all over again, do it right. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Al Inglehart, 96, Martins Lane. Even though I've heard repeatedly that this is a 12 to 1 majority, and we have discussed this, I am a septic system owner, and I am very concerned that the Advisory Committee and others think that it's perfectly acceptable that if a majority of people on a certain street, a majority, maybe with very large homes, decide that they want to replace the septic system with a sewer system, everyone will be forced to pay, it's a majority decision, but everyone pays an equal amount. That's the sticking point here. I don't think it's the only sticking point, but I hear warnings from a tiny minority over and over again, and I think you should evaluate what the minority is saying. I don't think $34,000, is it, am I right? Is it $34,000? That's not a huge amount of money considering the distributed cost over the Ship and Cottage Street system. Thank you very much.
Is there further debate? Yes, sir. Mr. Handorf.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Tim Handorf. I live at 7, Ship Street. I'm here to speak as one of the neighbors who supports the sewer project. This proposal began in August 2011, when a group of neighbors petitioned the sewer commission to lay sewer pipes on Ship and Cottage Streets. The desire for town hookup ranged from at least one neighbor having a failed septic system, to other neighbors being told their current system was near its life expectancy, to some neighbors wanting to upgrade for convenience, and still others for environmental reasons. After several hearings and outreach to the affected neighbors, a survey was conducted by the sewer commission to gauge the sentiment for the proposal. The final vote was decisive, 71% in favor, 13% either did not respond or were undecided, only 16% opposed. In essence, therefore, 84% of the neighbors were either fully in favor or at least willing to have the project proceed. This project finally was brought to the Town Meeting last April, as you've heard. It passed by a two-thirds vote. One citizen immediately filed for a motion for reconsideration, which meant that the article was brought back to Town Meeting the following night. It was easily defeated by a wide margin. In total, there have been at least 12 different informal and formal meetings on this project. There have been multiple hearings conducted by the sewer commission, the Advisory Board, and the Board of Selectmen. All bodies have approved the measure. We are now back before the Town Meeting. Why? As you've heard, essentially, last year's article did not specify the particulars of the proposal in the proper place. They were included in the comments section just under the article. This year's article spells out precisely how the costs will be levied and distributed among the neighbors. There is no substantive change in the article whatsoever. The cost of this project is completely borne by the neighbors and not by the town. So again, you may ask, why are we back with this matter at the Town Meeting? To be fair, there are legitimate issues brought up by both sides of this article. As with many matters in life, the issue is far more complicated than can be discussed in six minutes. That said, there have been endless opportunities for both sides to present their case. Perhaps it was best put by one neighbor who does not support the article. After the recent Advisory Board's decision to essentially support last year's affirmative vote, he quipped, "Democracy is getting expensive." In truth and in fairness, he's exactly right. Democracy is expensive. We often feel that our money is not going toward projects for which we agree. Consider our Congress, how many of us feel completely comfortable with their spending priorities? Or even more to the point, how many of us have left a Town Meeting either disappointed or even disgruntled with the outcome of a particular vote? It will always be so. Sometimes we will be on the winning side, and sometimes not. So what do I say to my neighbor? I say you are exactly right, democracy is expensive. However, consider the alternative. Democracy may be messy and cumbersome, it may even at times seem quite unfair. But as Winston Churchill quipped, "Democracy is the worst form of government, except all the others that have been tried." Therefore, I ask for your support so that we can bring this sewer project to a merciful conclusion. If you want this sewer project to go forward, please vote "no" for the affirmative motion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Al Inglehart, 96, Martins Lane. I hear the word democracy. The fundamental sticking point here is that a group of people on a street, if they wish to change to a sewer system, and they have majority, will be able to force everyone else who does not agree with that to pay. And I'm wondering if that is really democracy? Thank you.
Mr. Patch, I'll recognize Mr. Patch for three minutes.
Tom Patch, Ship Street. You know, to those people who talk democracy, 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 we don't live in a democracy, and I understand Town Meeting is pretty much as close to a democratic operation as you can get. But, you know, we have something called due process of law, and that's to protect the minority from the tyranny of the majority. And that's what I'm getting to here. The process was flawed. Because if the process is not flawed, we can all walk away from Town Meeting, knowing maybe we didn't get the result we wanted, but we can live with it, because we're comfortable with the fact that the process that we all agreed upon was followed. Now, again, I'm listening to people get up and tell you, "This was the case, and this was the case, and you knew this, and you knew that." Well, I find it very interesting that there was an allusion to the Comprehensive Waste Management Plan and certified need. There never was a determination of certified need. That's one of the problems, and that's what our Comprehensive Waste Management Plan requires for the North Sewer District. So a fundamental requirement of an extension of sewer in the North Sewer District was never determined. They're not telling you that. And basically, that's the function of the Board of Health, because again, the whole reason for the North Sewer District was to address a public health issue. And from my understanding, talking to the Board of Health, after Town Meeting last year, and the representation by one neighbor that their kids were playing in the cesspool, wet spot, the Board of Health sent somebody up there to look at it and found there was no problem. Not a problem, at least, that a town-sponsored sewer extension could only resolve. Their Title V inspection, when they bought the property, recommended pump annually and upgrade. There's been a dispute whether they pumped annually, but there's one fact, they have never upgraded their system. So what they're asking to do here, it's overkill. If people do have a problem, then maintenance your system, upgrade your system like the rest of you who are on septic systems too, and other areas of town that are not on sewer. And don't forget the point, there is a substantial windfall by people to have sewer put in, because it's going to cost them a heck of a lot less than to upgrade their system. So I ask you again to vote yes for this article. Thank you.
Mr. Salerno?
Michael Salerno, Chairman of the Sewer Commission, 17 Kilmer Road, speaking on behalf of the Sewer Commission. When I first heard about this decision to revisit something that this Town Meeting chose to do last year and was passed by a supermajority, I found it terribly disheartening. I'm part of a process where I don't agree all the time, but that's the process, that's the process we've taken. If we went back on school votes, on other votes, because some of us weren't happy, it's a terrible precedent to start, and I don't think this is where we should begin. This project was brought to the commission by the neighbors, as you've heard, of Ship and Cottage Street. The project was passed by a supermajority last year, then reconsidered, and still passed. It is important to note that should this article pass tonight, the current sewer ratepayers, yes, everyone who is currently connected to sewer, will be burdened with the cost of the expenditures to date, which equal greater than $34,000. the expenditures to date, which equal greater than $34,000. I urge you to vote "no" on the affirmative motion.
There being no further debate, we come to vote. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee, of course, was negative. It was for no action, so we have received Mr. Patch's motion, which has been duly made and seconded as the main motion. If you are in favor of Mr. Patch's motion, which would revoke the authority provided and appropriation made under the affirmative vote approving Article 38 of the 2012 Annual Town Meeting, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to the motion sought under Mr. Patch's affirmative motion, you will vote no. All those in favor of the affirmative motion that has been offered under Article 34, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, please say "no."
No.
The "noes" have it. The motion is lost. We now come to Article 35. Article 35 requires for its adoption a two-thirds majority, as it involves a zoning matter. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee was set forth in Article 35 in the supplemental The recommended motion would have the town amend the zoning bylaw of the Town of Hingham by adopting Section Roman 5, capital H, approving a temporary moratorium on the establishment of medical marijuana distribution centers in the town. All this is set forth in the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee. The primary purpose of that, of course, is to effect a moratorium to remain in effect through June 30, 2004. I draw your attention to the comment of the Advisory Committee that speaks to the absence of any regulations governing the distribution centers. Those regulations have yet to be promulgated by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, so the moratorium is being sought for that purpose. Is there discussion on the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee under Article 35? This is Corey.
Sarah Corey, 335 North Street, speaking on behalf of the Planning Board. After careful review, the Planning Board decided the best course of action is to wait or place a temporary one-year moratorium on the creation of a medical marijuana treatment center. We felt this was prudent because the state guidelines are not in place yet. Anything we permit now could violate state law when those state regulations are put in place. I'd like to be clear that it's not a position for or against placement of a marijuana facility in town. It is a one-year moratorium to be sure the Planning Board can hold hearings to decide how and where such a facility should be placed and present that next year at town meeting. The Planning Board recommends unanimously a yes vote on this article. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? There being none, we now come to vote on the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee as set forth in your booklets on the proposed motion under Article 35. It being a zoning article, it requires for its adoption a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no."
No.
Clearly, with two-thirds have voted in favor. The motion is adopted. We now come to Article 36. Article 36 asks whether the town will, through its Board of Selectmen and Historical Commission, investigate the feasibility of erecting a monument to those who died and were buried in marked or unmarked graves at the town farm off Beale Street in Hingham, or to act on anything related thereto. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth in your booklet and asks for affirmative action on the proposed motion relating to the former town farm off Beale Street. Is there discussion? Mr. McMillan.
My name's Alexander McMillan, 217 Main Street, and I'm your newly-minted town historian. And I'm speaking to this just very briefly at the behest of the sponsor of the article, Mr. Clark. A lot of people don't know that for most of our history, welfare, the care of the indigent, the insane, the poor, the otherwise disenfranchised, was a responsibility of the local communities. It wasn't a responsibility of the state or the federal government. And when the settlers came to Hingham and to these other towns around here, they brought with them the understanding, the expectation that they had lived with in the old country since the time of the Middle Ages, that the town had to take care of its poor and its ill, and so on and so forth. Well, that sounded good, and they understood that was their responsibility, didn't mean that they liked it. And as a result, in Hingham and a lot of these towns around here, they were not exactly welcoming places for outsiders. It wasn't that they wanted to check your Dunn &amp; Bradstreet rating before you came in, but they did want to satisfy themselves that you weren't about to become a public charge. And so this is the way things went here for a long time. And first, the King of England, for years and years and years, and then the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, through our state provincial legislature, tried to get Hingham to do something about this problem. What we were doing, we were taking in the poor and farming them out to people's houses. And this wasn't working out very well. Finally, in 1785, reluctantly, Hingham built their first almshouse, and it was right over here in Hingham Center. And after a number of years, that was no longer big enough, and they built another one right where the G.A.R. Hall is today. And then in 1831, that burned to the ground. And so the town then appointed a committee to look into the problem. And what they recommended was that we buy a large piece of land over on Beale Street where we built the town farm, the almshouse and town farm. And this was at that point the largest building in the town of Hingham. And it served Hingham as a combination insane asylum, poor farm, nursing home, prison, drunk tank, all of those things for more than 100 years. There were cells in the basement of this building. I saw them just before it was torn down a few years ago. But the reason that we're here today is that for the first two almshouses and for the last one that stood down there on Beale Street, on land where later their building was occupied by Project Turnabout, and now we have a condo unit over the top of it, underneath that building, there were a lot of dead people. And the reason is because they were buried in unmarked graves. And this was for well over 100 years, 150 years. And it's our feeling that there is a moral obligation to establish a monument to recognize the existence of this population currently unrecognized. If you go down behind the insurance company down there and go down the embankment in the back, you'll see a huge granite vault, which they used in the Witter Town when the ground wasn't soft enough. These graves were never marked, and they should probably have been researched at the time that condo unit was developed, but that's neither here nor there. Too late to do that now. But we do need to somehow, I think, meet our moral obligation by setting up a marker of some kind to honor these people. And I give Mr. Clark full credit because he has spent a great deal of time researching all the death certificates for these people who died in places that will say, "Poor Farm", "Beale Street," whatever it is. But there's no grave for them anywhere. And we have been unable to find any areas in the existing cemeteries where the poor and disenfranchised were buried. So we think if there are any place, they're underneath that subdivision down there now, and we should set up a marker for them. And there's money available for this because the Historical Commission has recognized that they have money in their fund to do it. The Board of Selectmen has supported it. And I'm sorry for taking this time to explain it, except we think it's an interesting thing that you all should know about, and I hope you support the article. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 36. All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All opposed? Well, that's an appropriate unanimous vote. We now come to Article 37. Article 37 relates to the payment of a bill from a previous fiscal year. I want to correct the recommended motion, which is set forth at page 56 of your booklet. You can simply strike in the first and the second lines the words "raise and appropriate or." So just strike those words so that as amended, the motion will read, "That the town transfer from available funds a sum of $9,486.50 for an unpaid bill of a previous year." Now, due to a provision in the Massachusetts General Laws, this motion, which looks innocuous enough, requires for its adoption a four-fifths vote. Because the year is closed, it requires a four-fifth vote of the governing body for the 2013 town meeting to address this unpaid bill. So I would suggest, unless there is debate, that we vote on this. So all those in favor of paying this bill for a previous fiscal year, please say "aye."
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's a unanimous vote. Article 38. Article 38 requires for its adoption a majority vote. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth in your booklets, page 66. This question asks whether the town will authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen to permit the occupants of 75 Abington Street to discharge stormwater through a town-controlled culvert. The Advisory Committee recommends positive action. Is there debate? This requires for its adoption a majority vote. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? It is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article 39. Allow me to make one correction in Article 39. Both in the article and in the recommended motion, there's simply a typographical error. On the Article 39 text, if you look at the far-left-hand margin in the parentheses, about five or six lines up from the bottom, you'll see a parenthetical reference to 38, a map reference 38. That map reference should be 48, 48. Similarly, in the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee, that parenthetical reference in the fifth line, Paranchona's Lot 37 on Assessor Map 48. The recommended motion under Article 39 is set forth with that correction. It would authorize the town to grant a non-exclusive subsurface easement for addressing an earth-retention system within existing right-of-way, all as says set forth in the recommended motion. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. This requires for its adoption a majority vote. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." It is a unanimous vote. The motion passes. We now come to Item 40. There is a recommended motion of the Advisory Committee under Article 40. It is set forth in the supplemental report of the Advisory Committee. And I have been furnished by the Board Chair, Ms. Johnson, with a proposed amendment to that recommended motion, which I will now read. It is relatively brief motion, and I'll direct your attention to where it needs to be made. So that motion has been made. Is there a second on Ms. Johnson's motion?
Second.
I'll read it to you. So in the 10th line, if you look at the supplemental report, you see the recommended motion. Ten lines down, it says, "along Hingham's inner harbor." For clarity, you can strike through the phrase "for the storage of marine equipment," or marina equipment. And you will insert the following text. "Business activities associated with the marine business at 3 Otis Street." And "the storage of marine equipment related thereto." I'll read that insertion again. "Business activities associated with the marine business at 3 Otis Street." And "the storage of marine equipment related thereto." That proposed amendment has been duly made and seconded, so we will now vote on it. All those in favor of the amendment, as I have just read it, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." That's a unanimous vote. The adoption of the recommended motion as it has been amended under Article 40 will require a two-thirds majority. Is there debate? Seeing none, we come to vote. Oh, Mr. Patch?
I believe back in 2005, there was another effort to get an easement from the then-property owner for a proposed bridge. And I came before town meeting, and I made town meeting aware of the fact that the town had an opportunity to avail itself of existing law in order to get essentially an easement for free. And that's because 3 Otis Street property is on a location formerly called Central Wharf. It's filled tidelands. And under Massachusetts law, you have to get a license from the Commonwealth to engage in any kind of activity on filled tidelands. And they have something called water-dependent activities and non-water-dependent activities. And if you're a water-dependent activity like a marina, you don't have to provide much in the way of public mitigation. You have to provide some kind of walkway. I think people see them in Boston down on the waterfront. If you're engaging in non-water-dependent activities, the public mitigation is substantial. What is going on down at 3 Otis Street currently, to my understanding, while maybe legal under town zoning, is actually illegal under the Chapter 91 statute? There is a restaurant down there, and that is a non-water-dependent activity. So, and again, I'm not saying that the owner of the property shouldn't go and try to amend his Chapter 91 license to get that non-water-dependent activity authorized. But in the course of that, the town can ask for that which it's asking you tonight to allow them to bargain with the property owner. For the life of me, having the fact I brought it up in 2005, and now we're in 2013, for whatever reason, nobody seemed to go down this path to try to see if we can save the taxpayers a little money. Because what's happening is, my understanding, is that the property owner wants some kind of reduction in the monies that he pays for the parking, which enables him to have the slips. And the slips are on, I believe, town-owned tidelands and part of the mooring field, or were part of the mooring field until it was handed over to his predecessor. And there's a substantial revenue source. Those slips make substantial amount of money. And I think that revenue flow, I believe it's $40,000, is not insignificant, particularly when you consider in light of the slips probably generate about $120,000 a year. So what I'm not hearing in any of this discussion is why the town did not try to avail itself of doing the prudent thing for the taxpayer, which is to get something that it wants for nothing by availing itself of the law that will allow it to get this for nothing. Thank you.
Mrs. Burns.
Laura Burns, 96 First Street, for the Board of Selectmen. We have been working on bringing to fruition town meeting's vote of last year authorizing the expense of some monies to create a bridge from Whitney Wharf over to... the expense of some monies to create a bridge from Whitney Wharf over to land near 3 Otis Street as part of the harbor development and the town's vision for an attractive harbor front that we can all visit and enjoy. And the best location for the landing of the bridge is at 3 Otis Street, and it's for that reason that we've been negotiating with the owner for an easement to land the bridge there. We have made extensive use of real estate council during this and town council during this process. Our interpretation of the law is that we have conducted our negotiations according to the law with the best interest of the town in mind. One thing that is not on the table in this negotiations is a reduction of the parking, the fees for the license for parking that the owner has. That was a request that the owner made that the Board of Selectmen was not interested in pursuing. So that's not part of this negotiation. What you see before you is what we are hoping you will authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate an exchange of easements. And the payment is $10,000, period, for the easement to land the bridge at 3 Otis Street. And then an exchange of easements in what we called like-for-like, which is that the town desires to land the bridge at 3 Otis Street as the best possible design location for that. But the owner of 3 Otis Street currently uses that piece of property for important business purposes, which is to store mooring equipment during the winter, and he uses it to take the mooring equipment out of the water in the fall and put it back in the spring. So if we use that area to land a bridge, we needed to provide him with some other way to accomplish his business purposes. So the goal will be to identify a different location near, as close as possible to his business, where he can first store that equipment that would no longer be stored where the bridge lands, and second, opportunity in the fall and in the spring to put the equipment in and out of the water in order that his business can go forward. Otherwise, he could not continue to conduct his business, so he would not be interested in offering us this easement because it would make it impossible for him to do his business. And we are very anxious as the Board of Selectmen that there should continue to be, and we should support marine-related businesses on the harbor along with all of the pleasure activities that are part of the harbor plan. And so our goal is to exchange for the easement a place where he can do the business activities that he needs to do to make his business go forward. And so those are the terms that we hope you will authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate with the owner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alan Peralta of 2 Anderson Road in Hingham. I'm also the chairman of the Harbor Development Committee. I have been before town meeting for the last two or three years for harbor-related issues, which we've had some unanimity on, and I would hope we would on this issue as well. To correct the point that Mr. Hatch said, the idea that, you know, you can't have a restaurant in Chapter 91. I work for a marine contractor. I'm very familiar with Chapter 91 laws. There are plenty of restaurants along Boston, along their harbor walk. This town meeting two years ago approved this as an accessory use. Food as an accessory use is legally permitted. There's nothing in Chapter 91 that says you... Quite honestly, it's a public place. I think most people... I'm not a coffee drinker, but I think red-eye roasters is a plus on the harbor. And the other thing we're looking to do, and the reason we want to have the pedestrian bridge where it is, it's not the plan that was done in 2005, as most of you remember from last year. It is to have it going across the back of his property. It takes up about one-fifth of his property. To be getting this for $10,000 is quite honestly a bargain. I worked in the Green Bush project. We did plenty of easement and acquisition takings. I don't think we had a single one for $10,000. This is also a fellow who gave the town an easement for $1 to run a sewer pump line to town pier, so we have a pump-out facility. So this is a cooperative owner. This is a good program, and I hope you endorse it. Thank you.
Tom Patchipci. I just want to correct a couple of things Mr. Peralta alluded to. First, it's Patch, not Hatch. But secondly, the fact is that there's already, the public already has a right to walk along the rear of that property as a result of a Chapter 91 license that I believe was issued in 2008 to a predecessor owner. Secondly, I never said you couldn't have, Chapter 91 prohibits restaurants. That's not the case. It just classifies it as a different type of use in determining the quantum of public mitigation that has to be given back for that use. And, you know, again, along the lines of this particular issue, the public already has a right to go back there. Essentially, what we're looking for is, I guess, more of a property interest as opposed to a condition of a license. And the other thing, something that I have tried to bring to the attention of the Selectmen that bothered me, it is true that Mr. Bond, the property owner, had given the town an easement so that they could run a sewer line downtown landing to the sewer pump-out. But a lot of people don't remember, when that sewer line was brought across the street to 3 Otis Street, it was done by the Keos. And the Keos came to town meeting asking for reimbursement of that cost in anticipation that the town was going to tie into it at a later point in time. And in fact, town meeting reimbursed them for the cost. So while I do understand we did get the easement, clearly it was contemplated that that sewer line was going to serve the town's property. And moreover, what Mr. Bond did get out of that was an entirely new parking lot. The town gave him an entirely new parking lot, even though that apparently wasn't part of the deal. And in talking to the harbor masters, he said they just...
You have one minute.
I asked if it was mitigation, and he said, "Well, we just did it." So, you know, again, I just want to make sure you people understand the facts and make an informed, intelligent decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peralta, I'll recognize you for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Alan Peralta, again, from 2 Anderson Road. Sorry, Mr. Patch, I thought I know who you are. The one thing that I should also point out is we're in the process right now, by authorization of town meeting from last year, we're doing a study of the beach erosion. We had some foresight to allocate $30,000 for the trustees of the bathing beach, who I'm now one of the members, to do a study of the beach erosion. Good thing we did, given the winter we've had. We put out an RFP for that, and we hired a firm that coincidentally is the same firm that we have hired to do the engineering for Whitney Wharf. Because they got both contracts, we are getting the work done for $12,000 less because there is a synergy in doing the two at the same time. If we don't go forward with the Whitney Wharf project, we'll pay $12,000 more for the engineering on the bathing beach. So I think that's an important consideration. I've also heard this argument about public access that's a right by Chapter 91. It's true, but if you read the law, it's from sunrise to sunset. We're proposing to have lights on this bridge. So if somebody wants to go after sunset, they wouldn't be able to go across that property. And then what the right-of-way is not the swath we're taking across this property is not what Chapter 91 envisions. Thank you.
There is no further debate. We will come to vote on the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee under Article 40, as it has been amended. As I said at the outset, because this involves a transfer of consideration for the purchase of real estate, it requires a vote of a two-thirds majority for its adoption. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Obviously, it's more than a two-thirds majority, and the motion is passed. We now come to Article 41. Article 41 is an article that we see annually. Article 41 would authorize the town to require, strike that, to authorize but not require for a period through April the 30th, 2014, the Board of Selectmen to accept grants of easements for purposes of streets, sidewalks, pedestrian walkways, or water drainage, sewage, or other utility facilities on terms and conditions that the board deems in the best interests of the town. Is there discussion? Hearing none, and mindful that this requires a simple majority for passage, I ask that all those in favor of the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by a clear majority. I would invite now a motion to dissolve the 2013 Annual Town Meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a unanimous vote.